I'd like to call to order the meeting of the council at the John Zon Community Center and Zoom at 6:30 PM on March 15th. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. We did have one notification. Are there any more? In accordance with MGL 30A, no person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. If the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Clerk Scott, roll call, please.
We have heard from Counselor Disorder, Counselor Gilmore, Counselor Healy, and Counselor Forghee that they are unable to attend tonight's meeting. Counselor Golub?
I'm here.
President Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Lapinski?
Present.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
Counselor Toranzo?
Here.
President Gwynn, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I just want to make a statement. So if anything changes in the course of the meeting before we continue our agenda, if at any time we lose the Zoom connection, I will adjourn the meeting. The reason that I'll have to adjourn the meeting upon losing the Zoom connection is I can call for a recess. If that does not fix the problem, we do not have a legal quorum to continue the meeting. So that means regardless of where we are, if we're in the middle of public comment, if we're in the middle of a presentation, or if they're in the middle of debate, I have to adjourn the meeting because at that point in time, we don't have a legal quorum to continue. It's nothing where I'm going to say, please stop talking. That's not my intent. My intent is to comply with the regulations that are set by our charter and the municipality. I hope we stay without a problem, but due to the fact we have several counselors on Zoom tonight and more than usual, not able to attend, just a little different organization than normal. Pledge of Allegiance,
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 18th to 25th?
Second, Elmer. The motion's been made and seconded. Are there any discussions, corrections from those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Commu-
Yes.
Any abstentions, or objections, or whatever? Communications from the superintendent of school and the school committee?
Thank you. You can give those to the clerk.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Yep. We don't have too much in terms of announcements and information to share tonight, but of course, we'll take your questions in a few. We had a snow day yesterday, which brings the last day of school to be Thursday, June 22nd at this time. Let's hope that's the final weather that we've just been informed that's the final weather closure of the season. We have two sports teams that have recently done, won championships. Let's see, boys' basketball, the Western Mass, Class C champs, something like that. I always get it wrong, and I know they're gonna be mad, but I was gonna, they did win a championship. And then boys' hockey also, one there, that might have been Western Mass, but kudos to them. Lots of pride in the winter sports right now. And we promised last month that we would bring information about what I think is pretty exciting thing for the schools. We have taken delivery of a food truck, or we're shortly to take delivery of a food truck. And we've brought Greta along, our food service director, to talk a little bit about it, answer any questions. And I think you have a handout that she's providing as well.
Hello, everyone. My name is Greta Schachman. I'm the food service director. And I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on what was said at the last meeting about the food truck. I'm very excited about this project. I have now had the pleasure of custom designing two food trucks in my life, which not many people can say. This was mostly funded by a food security infrastructure grant, which is an amazing state grant that's come out of the pandemic and continues to fund amazing work all over this city and the region and the state. So we're very thankful for that. The purpose and use of this truck will be, well, it's multi-purpose, which I'm excited about, but we are going to be using it during the school year with our existing national school lunch and school breakfast programs. It'll be used for field days instead of lugging a grill out to one of the school playgrounds. We'll be able to roll up in the food truck. We have a flat top rate on the truck. We can cook burgers. So that's really exciting. We'll be able to serve outdoor lunch for the older students at the middle and high school, just instead of, you know, the kids already are going out there to eat, but that provides another exciting option. The goal is really to increase participation. And food trucks have become trendy all over the country as a way to get students excited about school meals. We'll obviously be using it during the summer for our kickoff event and for our mobile meal site. So instead of having our staff go out with their personal vehicles to multiple sites across the city, we'll be able to load up the truck and kind of create a route that will hit parks and various locations across the city. There's also a really exciting opportunity to use what's called the CACFP program, long title, but basically it allows for after-school meals. So that's something that I'm exploring for next year as a way to increase free meals in the community for kids. So I'd love to partner with community organizations that provide enrichment for kids after school already. And then we would be able to provide a free supper meal for kids. So the goal is really to use existing federally funded programs that are reimbursable to feed as many kids across the city as possible for free, but there are also opportunities for catering, for events, where we would be able to kind of utilize our institutional buying power, you know, where we buy local foods, nutritious foods, and provide affordable meals for adults and the whole family as well. So that's something I'm excited about. And this is fully equipped. In the middle section of your handout, it kind of tells you all the equipment that's on here. You can see the layout. So, you know, we really have the flexibility to cook in our kitchens and then load up the truck or cook directly on the truck. And yeah, the goals are to increase participation, foster community connections, and to increase access to healthy food in the community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Roughly, how many meals do you serve in the summer and fall?
That's a very good question. I am working on our summer grants now. I think we did 19,000 meals, breakfast and lunch last July. And then June, you know, we only had a few days in June. So July is our biggest month. And certainly, you know, grab and go is a big part of that. I don't want to comment too much on that. It's not up to me, I will say. But I know folks in the community love that.
Counsel Lapinski?
I wasn't planning to ask a question this soon, but since I have a couple of questions about what you just said. The first question is, you said it was mostly funded through a grant. What's the percentage roughly?
I believe it says it's 80%.
And the other 20 came from?
It came from my budget.
Okay. And the second question is, what does the acronym stand for? CACFP?
Oh, Community and Adult Care Feeding Program, I think. There's a lot of acronyms in school food.
Sure, thanks.
Or Child and Adult Care? One thing I just want to clarify about the food service budget is that the food service program is created to be self-sustaining. So Greta's budget is separate from the rest of the district budget. So when you see the school, my budget that's presented to school committee, food service is separate from that outside of one line that reflects payoff of bad debt at the end of a school year, which is required. So that's the only piece that's included in the school budget. The last thing, okay, the last thing I wanted to give City Council an update on were some of the re-envisioning our school facilities activities. At this point, just to be clear, we have not, I should say, the school committee has not identified any option that is moving forward. We are still in the investigation phase. School committee has asked me to do two things, to look at the transportation options. If we were to look further at option one, which the option one is creating the grade band schools. And they've also asked me to start looking at what would happen if we were to no longer use Green River as a school. So in the interest of full disclosure, I've done more work on transportation than Green River, but we are still moving along and on developing the transportation issues and still looking at other options that get presented by community members or staff, parents. So nothing has been finalized. We have a lot of detail to be worked out before anything is presented officially for school committee to consider and potentially vote on. So we're still in the evidence gathering.
Any questions for our superintendent or any of the guests tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much. And it all sounds really good. Thank you.
I now have the correct sports things. Hockey are the Class C champs, and boys' basketball made it to the state Sweet 16.
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
I'm going to, before I recognize the mayor, Counselor Bullock, I'm just going to ask you that if we lose transmission, can you flag the clerk? If you, if for any reason you can't hear us tonight, or can't answer, or whatever, if you could directly contact our clerk, just in case. Sometimes we don't know if you can hear us or not. So I just want one person to really help me tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, Kathy, can you, can you private message me your cell phone number, though? Because I don't think I have your cell.
Yes.
And I have mine, too. If you need to, I can put it here and just say, hey, we can't hear you.
Okay.
Because with that much of a quorum Zoom tonight, I don't want to have any issues. I knew it was gonna lock, so. If we can have the mayor or her representative?
Hello. Good evening, councilors. I am not the mayor. I'm Dani Laterno, Chief of Staff. As many of you might know, the mayor is out this week. She had a planned medical procedure on Monday. She's recovering at home. She's working a bit. If you may see, she's checking emails, and she and I have spoken every day. So she's on the mend. I'm going to be brief, have some notes in order to yield time for, there's a presentation by MJ Adams and Director Warner regarding all kinds of things around Main Street. So I just have a few things to say. First off, the fire station, the new fire station. I'd like to invite the City Council and members of the public to a very small ceremony tomorrow, Thursday, March 16th at 10:00 AM at the new fire station site. They'll be doing a beam raising. So that is good news. So that's moving right along. I don't know if you guys are following Fire Station Fridays on the city's Facebook page, but it's the time lapse video of the fire station progress, and it's really cool. This was shared a bit at Ways and Means on Monday with the members of that committee by the deputy chief of police. But there is work moving forward from the PD in hiring, and there are some updates even from Monday. We have, we have four accepted offers for new police officers. Two of those people do not need to be academy trained, so they should be able to start very quickly. Two of them do. And so they are working very diligently towards closing the overnight shift gap. Talking about winter, I do personally want to thank, I mean, as the person in charge of things this week, I want to thank the Greenfield DPW Dispatch Fire and Police for the response to the storm this week. I was in the position of answering the late night and early morning phone calls and of getting updates throughout the day on Tuesday. I have learned, even though I already knew, how many people are really involved in the simple task of closing down city office buildings. All the folks mentioned did an amazing job, and I know they all must be exhausted. So I want to thank them. And also thank Fernando Flurry, our IT director, Caitlin Von Schmidt, and Janine Greaves, all of whom pitched in a lot this week to help with that because our communications director is out on vacation. And it did end up pretty messy yesterday with many trees down and roads closed. And I know that people are still working on the recovery effort from that. So I do want to just kind of turn over the mic to Director Warner, so he can actually update you guys on snow and ice. And then I will be here for some questions if you have them.
Good evening, councilors. So I thought it would be a good idea to come tonight and update you really quickly on the snow and ice budget. Our total budget is $217,800. Today, including yesterday's storm, we've had 10 plowing events, seven overnight cleanups, and 18 road treatments. But I want to make note to the road treatments. This is where it's gotten expensive for us. We've had eight multiple treatment storms to where we were fighting ice. So you have to put down multiple treatments on the roads. On March 1st, I sent the mayor a request for permission to deficit spend. We were down to 41,000 at that point in time. And our salt shed was looking a little thin, so I got a little nervous. I wanted to get out ahead of it, looking at the extended forecast. And we all know how that worked out. But the best numbers I can come up with right now, as of this afternoon, is we're down to approximately $18,000, and the salt shed is a little thin. I got my fingers crossed that we make it and don't deficit spend. The last three years, we've had money left over. We've been fortunate. A lot of the plowing events have fallen on Friday nights and weekends, too. So it's a, you know, about $11,000. An average stormer's about $11,000 just in overtime alone, not including materials and field and whatnot. So that's just a quick update. And if anybody has any questions, by all means.
Anyone have any questions for the director on this subject? Counsel Ricketts?
Yes, I just want to thank you and your staff for all the work you did, all the late hours and constant. And it was great to read. I think I saw an amusing story about someone, one of your workers running across the street picking up trash on a day that they decided they weren't going to pick it up, but he still did it instead. So just thank you for everything.
Thank you, Counselor Ricketts. And that's really important. Yesterday's storm, although it wasn't a blockbuster here, like it was west of here or north of here, it had multiple facets, a lot of wires coming down. I had to pull the trash and recycle folks off their routes, but they were going above and beyond trying to get underneath wires and whatnot. And just for safety's sake, we pulled them off and offset everything for a week. But, you know, trees down, we had to pull plow drivers off, put recyclers and plow trucks, and put the tree crews out there. We had about 10 or 12 trees that come down. So, and we're going to pick up debris for the next couple of weeks when we got to it. But thank you.
Counsel Lapinski?
So I have just one question. So are we doing it separately, the two different sets of questions?
Yeah, we're just talking to Director Warner at this moment, but if you-
Thanks. So the question for you is, or I guess it could be for either of you, but since we're talking with snow and ice, what is the threshold for the declaration of a parking ban?
So there's a couple of things I take into account with an emergency parking ban. And that's usually if we think we're getting more than two to three inches of snow, I put one into place. And then the duration of the storm and considering downtown cleanup has to be done after hours. So there's a lot of factors that play into it. If we're going to get an inch or two, or we think we're just going to be able to treat the roads and not have to plow, I generally don't put one in place.
Got it. Is there anywhere on the city website where this is stated?
I'm getting used to the new website myself, but I believe there's information in the parking page, in the DPW page, as far as the emergency parking bans.
And it, and it gives an indication of what kind of storm is likely to cause one?
No, it doesn't indicate that. It's just put into place by myself or the mayor.
Sure. I suggest having at least an indication of what the threshold would be and the factors involved publicly available because there are, certainly, a lot of my constituents are in the neighborhoods where it becomes an issue. And if there was a better sense of when it was and wasn't likely to happen, there might be less, I guess, raised emotions is what I'm thinking of. There have been arguments on my street that I wish could have been avoided, but nonetheless, I just think if we had more information available, so people were able to plan for it, since some of them take effect at 3:00 in the morning, that's something I would suggest.
Okay, thank you. When we're storm planning, we're storm planning 48 hours to 72 hours in advance with the forecast, and we kind of adapt as it changes. We do, I do try and get the ban out as soon as I can. And we reach multiple, multiple outlets, social media, the radio stations, the TV stations. And if there's anything we can add, we'll add it, but reverse 911, whoever signed up with that. So it can be tricky. If they're, if they're telling me two inches of sleet and ice, I'm going to call an emergency parking ban. So it's a little tricky to put that language in there, because we're slip sliding away. And we don't, the last thing we want to do is damage vehicles. The last two storms is a prime example. I mean, full snowmen are landing against the curb in folks' driveways. And if you try and get around a car with that kind of snow, you're for sure going to do damage to a vehicle trying to open the road. And that's the other piece of it, so we can get our job done.
Yeah. And just to clarify, I have full confidence in your ability to make that decision. And I'm not suggesting that people don't have access to the information when it's declared. I personally look on the front page of the website. I was more thinking that if people knew what the expectations were before the season even started, there might be less of a chance that someone would question whether or not it was happening, question whether or not this one's actually going to be enforced, et cetera. So having, even if it says, generally speaking, asterisk, don't hold me accountable for this, you know, PS Marlon Warner, you know, whatever you have to say, right? I think it would be beneficial to, certainly, the people in my neighborhood and other densely populated neighborhoods, to have that indication ahead of time. This is the kind of thing that might cause us to do a parking ban. So that's why, that's why I make the suggestion, but I make no inferences on anything other than your full ability to make the decision when it happens.
Thank you. We do have a snow and ice procedures operations in our DPW page, right under snow and ice. And I think it's, some of that's indicated in there. I review that every year. So I'll be doing it again, not in the spring, probably in the fall, but thank you.
Counselor Mayo?
This question is, or not question, but comment is to Director Warner. I just wanted to say kudos to you and your staff for doing such a great job. Yesterday, I was able to travel on the roads when I didn't expect to. And so was my wife, who drove to Northampton, and there was no problem there. And I just wanted to say thank you and put the Boy Scout in you for making sure and being prepared. But I just wanted to make a comment. You said that you look for various sources, and I have a great source for you. Dave the Weather Nut on the internet. He's 90% correct in his assessments of weather occurrences. So I would urge you to put him on your list to check for, especially the Pioneer Valley. He is particularly very good at, he's just a weather guy. He's not a professional weather forecaster, but it's just his forte. And he's very good at it. And I urge you to put him on your list. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mayo. He's one of about 12 that I look at. And then I picked the one in the middle that I think's right for Greenfield, because Greenfield really is in an odd place when it comes to weather forecasting where we sit. So I don't guess all the time, no. But thank you.
Any other questions for Director Warner? Thank you. Chief Staff Laterno, do you have more to speak with us tonight, or just?
Nope. I was going to leave time for MJ and her presentation.
All right. Counselor Bottomley?
Hi, I have a question for Chief of Staff Laterno. It's a staffing question. I'd send an email to the mayor's office. I know she's out, but I was wondering if you could give us any indication of where Police Chief Hague is and when you might expect him back.
So Police Chief Hague is on vacation. He was on a planned family trip. And as of Monday, their flight was canceled because of weather. And so he is actually still out of the state. And as far as I know, they have new flight plans for Thursday to come home at that time. That's where he is.
Did you have a follow-up on that, John, or?
Just to say, it would be helpful to have communication, especially on anything surrounding the police and the police chief. It's a very sensitive subject, obviously, and a lot of rumors went around, and a lot of people questioning why the chief of that department would be on vacation at such, what we've been told is a critical and crucial time. It's just a little bit concerning.
I understand. I've heard some of the rumors, too. I was also on vacation last week. The communications director is on vacation this week. There's a lot of school vacations during March, and I believe this is a week that the chief typically, typically takes. But in retrospect, I do hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Counsel Lapinski?
If someone else wants to go ahead of me, because I've already spoken, but I have questions for the chief of staff, so.
Nope, that's fine. You're-
Um, my question has to do with the state police. There's a couple of ways I want to get at this, but the main thing is, is it true that the city of Greenfield is paying for the incident command center that's stationed at the police department?
I don't actually think so. I actually don't know the answer to that. As far as I know, I have the same information that you guys have, that I believe the mayor sent to you on Saturday, March 4th, regarding the latest information from the state police. And that's what I have for now. I don't believe that we're paying for that unless I am not aware of an agreement that came through that I didn't see.
Sure. Do you know whether or not that trailer is staffed?
See, Penny knows more than I do.
Do you know? Only because I went up and took a tour of the trailer, because it's kind of large, so why not?
I thought they were using it as their command post to be in town.
Yeah, it is a command post. It's the size, I don't know if anybody's seen it. It's like two full-size conference rooms back to back in there. And, and lots of TVs, and, you know, they have cameras that see lots of things. They can be in contact all the time with the local police stations, the FBI, Logan, Bradley Airport. There's somebody who staffs it at all times. And there's not a bathroom in there as big as that thing is, so it still has to come inside. And, but yeah, there, there's someone there. And so when the state police are out working from the 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM shift, if they want to come in to do their paperwork, it's all set up for them to come in and do any paperwork there. if they want to come in to do their paperwork, it's all set up for them to come in and do any paperwork there.
Thanks.
Sure. So I guess my question is, does that cost the city of Greenfield money? Because I'm being told by my constituents that they're finding out that it does. And then also, do we have to pay anything for state troopers to cover that shift? And the reason I'm asking these questions is not because people shouldn't be paid, but because I was under the impression that the state police were not going to do us any favors, but would simply respond to calls if they thought that it rose to the level that they would respond in any other community.
I honestly do not know the answer to that question, but I, I can find out. I do believe that if it was a financial agreement, I probably be aware of it. But I can find out for you guys. I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Director. If you can, I mean, Chief Staff, if you can find out that question for us, and I too believe we probably would have been a request would have come through prior to it happening than after, but please update us. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. MJ is via Zoom this evening. MJ, as you know, you have two pieces on the agenda tonight. The first one being the initial request for you to give us an update on the downtown revitalization plan and such. So MJ, take over.
Thank you so much. And my apologies for not being there in person this evening. I do have two things on the agenda with you this evening. The first is to brief you and bring you up to speed on where we are on the downtown Greenfield revitalization, revitalization plan update. And I think Christian is going to be sharing some slides. So and I want to show you that I'll be doing a little piece of this presentation, then Director Marlo's Warner is going to step in and talk a little bit about the the Main Street Improvement Plan as part of this effort. And then we'll be available to hear your comment and feedback and answer any questions you might have on this. I do believe I sent a copy of the draft out to everyone earlier this week, and I hope you had the chance to take a look at it. My goal is not to go over page by page today, but really to give you, to brief you on it and to give you a sense of what we've been hearing. And also to have you have the opportunity to have some comment and feedback and to talk about where we're going to take this because the, the, what comes out at the end of the plan is a series of recommendations about where we should be putting our time and energy as we move forward over the next couple of years. So background on this is the downtown Greenfield revitalization plan actually came out of the work from the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee. In two thousand and fourteen, when the city did its master plan, it did a comprehensive plan for the whole city. I always say that brilliantly, Greenfield had the good sense to appoint a committee whose job it was to caretake and to continue to advance the elements of the master planning process. And it's been a very hardworking committee that has kept this plan alive and has helped to really support and advance a number of aspects of it. And as we were doing this over time, a lot of things were starting to happen in the downtown. And so in, let's see, in, in late two thousand and nineteen and early two thousand and twenty, Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee agreed to focus on, on doing an update to the downtown revitalization plan. Like I said, because there were so many things that were happening in the downtown, lots of good energy, but we also knew that it was important to sort of pull everybody together so that they were talking with each other and planning coherently together so that we wouldn't be doing this in a haphazard fashion. So we got all ready to do that. We had a real big, great community forum in February of two thousand and twenty and talking about how important downtowns were and arts and culture were to downtowns and how they were changing over time. And we put our name onto it as the, called a deliberate downtown, planning, growing by design. And again, that happened in February, two thousand and twenty. We know what happened in March, two thousand and twenty. So we had to put a pause on the actual planning processes that we were working on as a community as, because it's a very much a, a community engaged process. But we wanted to keep the ideas and the effort and the energy moving forward. So we were able to spend the next couple of years while we were in COVID to really do some important work. And the first thing was that we really took a deep dive in terms of what the economics of our downtown was. We were able to get a grant who, from the Massachusetts downtown initiative that really gave us a really solid understanding of what the economic activity was that was in our downtown, where, what were our strengths, what were our weaknesses? And that was a great basis for us to base our next couple of efforts on, which included, you know, trying some things that we've been talking about for a couple of years. Clearly the Court Square, closing it down and seeing how it worked as a pedestrian plaza as a pilot was one of the things, some outdoor dining, working with some, creating some pop-up shops in downtown. Those are things we've been able to do over the last couple of years with some funding that came to us because of the COVID pandemic. And then we were able to change, convert, convert some green space that we've been talking about. The Fisk Avenue parking lot got converted into a pocket park. And we, we were just on the edges, able to do a bunch of little things that, that helped us really sort of speak to what we wanted the future of downtown to look like. At this time, emerging last year about this time was the initial draft of the map that we saw for the Main Street Improvement Program. And once we saw that and, and we were looking at the roadway when we first saw that map. But as we started to piece onto that map, all the things and all the projects and activities that were happening in the downtown, it was clear that we really needed this, that this was a good tool to use to focus our effort and energy. Because one of the things that we're knowing is that it's the communications. When everyone knows what's going on and they feel like they're part of it and they can have an input and, and participate in this, then it works much better for the community as a whole. So I'm going to do what I call my walk down Main Street from Coal Range Street down to High Street to sort of talk about all the different elements that are at play, that are going to influence what our downtown is going to look like in five to seven to 10 years from now. And, and we're really looking at creating an environment where we're building a future for our Main Street that will serve the community as we've been envisioning it. I will say the starting point for the Main Street Improvement Program is really the Complete Streets Project that the city did back in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen under Director Torog. That really talked about creating complete streets that were not just for cars, but were for pedestrians and bicyclists and the whole community. And I'm going to leave the, the details on the Main Street Improvement Program to Director Warner as I walk down this, this, this process. And what I'll say is, is as we were starting to work on this downtown revitalization plan, we started to hear concerns that were raised and, and you know, specifically from the business community about all this stuff that was happening on Main Street. What was, what, what does that mean in terms of parking and parking of demand and, and parking supply for not just at this moment right now, but for our future. So we were able to get some funding to support a parking management study, which we have started up. We will be doing some data collection, real-time data collection in late April, early May. So we get a good sense of what the use is. They're also going to be looking at the projects that are on our plate to see what sort of impact the parking needs are, the projects will have on a parking supply and demand. And we'll be playing that out as we, we move forward in finalizing this downtown revitalization plan. But there's, there's a lot of things that are happening in Main Street right now and people are, are surprised and, and people, you know, and it's, and things, things keep moving along, things keep changing. And we want to keep this map updated because it's a, I think a great communication tool on what's, what lies ahead of us and and what we need to be doing to make sure that we're taking the best advantage of the resources that are going to be made available to help us implement this. First of all, we all know, and, and I was delighted to hear that there's going to be a beam raising at the fire station tomorrow, although I hope they don't do it like we do with the Habitat wall raisings. And I'm trusting that, that you won't be doing that with hard hats, but I think it's a really important, and when I talk about that Main Street, the thing I say is, is that the city is bookending Main Street with investments. We've got the library at one end, the fire station at the other, and these major public investments really demonstrate to the community and the business community and the, and the citizenry that Main Street is really important to us. It's our, our identity. It's when people think of Greenfield, they think, they picture this beautiful small town center and what it has to offer. So as we walk down Main Street, the new, the fire, the community, the fire station is in the works. We're expecting completion. Early two thousand and twenty-four is the latest date that I've heard on it. The Community Justice Support Center of Franklin County, it has moved into one fourteen, one oh six, one fourteen Main Street. That's the building that's been largely underutilized. It's only partially utilized now. There is some interest in some other part of it at the moment, and we're hoping that something comes of that because that's been a profoundly underutilized property on our Main Street for a number of years. As you know, we, we are in the middle of supporting the extent, extension of, expansion of the Well Street Shelter, which will renovate the existing building and also create thirty-six new additional apartments for people emerging from chronic homelessness. That project is, we're expecting that, that project, that property has actually been sold to clinical support options. They're going to be the new homeless services providers and they'll be starting to run the shelter on April first, but they have purchased the property. They'll run it and renovate it and then build an addition with some additional units. Again, I mentioned already the Fisk Avenue Pocket Park and the cross, the Rainbow Crosswalk, really trying to make a very pleasant and attractive green space in the center of our downtown. The Wilson's Building, moving forward, you know that the Greenfields Market will be expanding into the first floor and basement. And the community builders will build, are intending to build sixty-five mixed income rental homes on the upper levels of that property. And we'll be, those, those plans will be coming out at the end of the month. So they'll start to go through the permitting processes. All right. Will forward the skateboard park, you all know, if that's under construction with completion expected in June, twenty twenty-three. And I'm going to note that that really, that, that particular project says to young people in our community, come downtown. We're making space for you and we welcome you down here. And we're expecting that to have some very positive spin-off benefits in our local business community. We're going to be installing a interactive business directory on, on the corner of Court Square and Main Street early this spring. The Court Square redevelopment, you've seen these plans many times where the concept is to convert Court Square into a pedestrian plaza making, and like I said, we, we, we did it on a pilot project. For the last couple of years, we'll be setting that up again at the end of April. And, and running it again as a, a pilot this summer. The game plan is to move into design and engineering and to talk about, to take everything that we've learned from the, the test driving that we've done with that. And to develop a plan so that we can build it out hopefully next year. The GCC Downtown Center Building was sold to a new owner at the end of December. We're working with him and connecting him to Mass Development and other business assistance organizations to help him figure out how to put that building to good use. The First National Bank Building, our old favorite is, has a request for proposal out. Those are due in the end of responses to that proposal are due at the end of April. I spoke with the Greenfield Redevelopment Authority today, who's the owner of that building. Once we receive any proposals in on that, we'll be moving forward and making some decisions about how to advance that from being a underutilized, empty building into something that contributes positively, especially to the town common area. The Levitt Hubby House, which is our current library, will be, come, is a redevelopment opportunity. I know the mayor is contemplating her next moves on that. I don't have any updated details, but there is discussion about how to move forward on how that building might be reused. The new library, you're all well aware of, completion in spring of two thousand and twenty-three. And as we settle into that new use, one of the things that we're looking at is the parking and how parking is going to readjust itself in the downtown area with that, and also with the Hope Street Parking Lot as the temporary fire station closes up after the new fire station opens up. And we make some decisions, really looking at the uses and how our parking, what's our parking supply and demand? How we're going to use the Hope Street Parking Lot in the future? Will it revert to a parking lot or might it be, be made available for other uses? And then the Armory Building, which many of you know that it went to, went for sale last fall. There's a new owner. We haven't heard specifically what their plans are. Hope to hear from them sometime in the near term. But I think that, I think that what it speaks to between the Armory Building and the GCC Downtown Center building selling, that there seems to be a sense of that, you know, Greenfield is an exciting and an important place to be making new investment from the private sector point of view. So we're pretty excited about that. And even though it's not on this map, I'll share with you that one of the mills down on Hope Street sold to a new owner. The, the web is now owned by a, a new owner who's going to sit tight for a year and figure out what they're going to do with it, but they're interested in seeing that more actively used. And that's essentially it for the walk down Main Street. I'm going to hand it over to Marlo now so he can talk a little bit more about the Main Street Improvement Program itself. So Marlo, it's all yours.
Thank you, MJ. So I'm here to speak just to the, the Main Street, what we've been calling Curb to Curb Project. I know Counselor Elmo is familiar with that and SGIC. This, this is basically when I say curb to curb is the blacktop area. I believe downtown was updated back in the early eighties was the last time anything was updated as far as code ADA accessibility, et cetera. The project, which was appropriated last spring for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was to hire engineering and design. We hired Fuss and O'Neil to start putting this together and to see what it's going to look like. So we put a plan together as a group. We included infrastructure, folks from the city, Chief of Staff Letourneau. Thought it was a good idea to put us all in one room, Fernando, Mr. Lunt, MJ, so on and so forth. Because part of this project is not, not everything on the surface. We have a lot of very old infrastructure under Main Street. Most of our infrastructure is a hundred years plus sewer drain water. So then we were thinking about, okay, what does Fernando have need down there for future use? And then our G set, how are we going to get off, you know, the light pole, so on and so forth. So we've been, we've been working through that process. And then we formed, formed a subcommittee of myself, John Lunt, Fernando, to talk about just the infrastructure and had a separate conversation with Fuss and O'Neil. So what we did was we went out and we inspected all of our infrastructure under Main Street and I was pleasantly surprised. I, I've been around a while and know the infrastructure well, but the, the sewer and drain is actually in really good shape. We're not going to have to excavate most of that. We can actually line the pipes. It'll be good for another hundred years. So that's kind of an important piece of the disruption to the downtown business area. Two water mains have to be replaced. They're very old. One's undersized. There's a four inch that runs from Chapman Street to Coal Range Street that feeds the whole developed area behind McGovern. So it's undersized for firefighting, so on and so forth. It's had its share of main breaks also. The other one's an eight inch on the other side of Bank Row on, on the east side. It's, would be on the south side, running along the courthouse up to High Street's an eight inch main. It's very old. So as far as the, the real crazy excavation, the water lines are going to be the big thing. So now they call this non-participating in this TPO project. I think we've talked about that Wisdom Way and Nash's Mill Bridge. This is the project that we're, we're trying to get completely funded by just paying the engineering, the whole Main Street project. So with that said, they, they have what they call non-participating for the city to replace their infrastructure. It goes out with the same bid. It's kind of an oxymoron. We are participating, but we have to pay for the infrastructure to be swapped out, right? But we, we do get extra value out of that because they do all the bidding and so on and so forth. We're not paying immobilization fees, separate bids, time. It's actually a money savings at the end of the day to include it in the project. And the, the disruption of the, the business district is like a one, one-time thing rather than three or four years of infrastructure and disruption down there. So right now, currently the, the, the project schedule is we're working for, towards what we call twenty-five percent design. Before I get to the schedule, we had a, a meeting on February ninth, it was a workshop. There was many questions that came out as soon as I started talking about this project about bike lanes, proposed bike lanes, how much parking we losing? So we worked with Fuss and O'Neil, the, the city group that I. So we worked with Fussin O'Neal, the, the city, uh, group that I had mentioned. And Fussin O'Neal thought it'd be a great idea to have these workshops before we get to twenty five percent design. Because when we get to twenty five percent design, it's kind of from there forward. You're going backwards, so to speak. So between now and June, uh, they're working on the first workshop. There were, Council Elmer was there, I think. There was a lot of information given and there was a lot of information received and Fussin O'Neal is going through all that information, anywhere from, ADA compliance to trees to, um, the bike lanes against the curb, parallel parking, so on and so forth. Um, but the whole project is geared at, at bringing it up to today's safety standards. Mass DOT, safety standards and mass highway, uh, excuse me, uh, the national highway standards. So right now, we, we had the public workshop on February ninth. The concept alternatives development is gonna happen around winter of twenty twenty three. Um, so they'll be working on the, um, the initial workshop. We're gonna have another workshop in June. They're gonna put all this stuff together, everyone's input and, and try and find out how everyone's input fits this, the standards of what it should be. So then, um, development of the twenty five percent design plans, uh, summer through the fall of twenty three will be happening kind of in between this. It sounds a little confusing. I'm just trying to put all the steps out. And then Fussin O'Neal and the city will submit twenty five percent design plans in, in, in late fall of twenty three. It's usually a four, five, six month review by Mass DOT to approve that piece before we can move on to further design and completion of design. Currently, under the transportation, um, improvement plan through the Transportation Planning Organization, um, the Main Street Project is, uh, set to happen in FY twenty seven. So we have plenty of time to get the engineering and design done. The project limits, just as a reminder, is from Col Rain to Hot Col Rain Street to High Street. Um, and it's currently, it started out at six point two million, but we know things have gone up to two years. So it's estimated at seven point eight million right now. The cost of the project. Um, and that kind of summarizes, I'd be more than happy to take any questions on that particular piece.
Council Elmer.
Yeah, I think it would help if we clarified how much the city has put in and how much we're gonna get, how much the, the state will pay for. My understanding is the city has had, is gonna have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. Maybe, is that the two seventy five thousand you mentioned?
Yes, that's to get us to twenty five percent design. Um, and I think, I believe I had in my, my five year capital for next spring for the additional funding to finish the engineering design. The answer to the question is we're gonna be somewhere around six hundred and fifty thousand for engineering and design, but we're getting eight million dollars in, in return.
Right, that, that's what I think the council needs to appreciate. It's kind of like when you put the Wisdom Way wall up, you had to spend some money for engineering and then the state paid for the rest of it. So basically, this is a chance to get seven point eight million dollars of our tax money back by spending some of it locally. The other thing that I can share from having listened to Fussin O'Neal, is that their name?
Yes.
Is that when you invite the state to design something like this, uh, they're gonna look at best practices for this kind of street. And to my amazement, we have ten thousand cars on average going down Main Street every day. Every day, ten thousand cars. So that puts, and, and they have, uh, best design ideas, best practice ideas for streets like that. They can also identify the accidents where they happen on Main Street. So best design, uh, does not include angled parking. That's considered a dangerous way to park. Although everybody who grew up in Greenfield thinks that's the only way to park. And also having bicycles go outside, not have a lane of their own is very dangerous. Uh, and so they're gonna suggest best design, best practice is gonna suggest a bike lane on either side, I suspect. Finally, they have ideas about making pedestrians safer when they cross the street. So there'd be cutouts to, so that the distance that the, that the pedestrians have to walk is less and islands in the middle so that pedestrians can walk halfway across, look and see what's coming the other way. There's a lot of bits like that that will be dictated if we want the seven point eight million. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for, uh, this project, Council Ricketts?
Bless you. So it's kind of interesting that you brought out about the islands, because the one thing I was gonna bring up was, do you think that you were gonna keep the bump outs that we put in years ago? Or did they look at that and think maybe it's time to like, let it go? So there's more. And then my second question is with the apartments that will be going into the old Wilson's in the shelter, are you gonna be really focusing on lots of sewer infrastructure for those two places? Are we nervous about that at all?
So the first question is, like I said, those what we call bump outs or islands for the crosswalks. They're way beyond what today's standard and best practices are, meaning, uh, they're, they're expired, so to speak. So there, there's different, we'll, we'll be bringing further information forward as we go into the second workshop, but there were some slides where, you know, like the bike lane, actually the bump outs were there, but the bike lane goes right through that, but they're set up with good visibility and, and all that good stuff. Um, and, and all the intersecting streets on Main Street are gonna be revamped to, to meet, uh, today's standard for vehicle turning radiuses and seeing folks in the crosswalks. We know that can be a problem at the old Wilson's Building. People pull out and it's kind of blind where they're stepping out, even though there's an island there, but all that stuff's gonna be addressed. Um, so the, the second question on the sewer infrastructure, as far as the Well Street, we've already, uh, actually gone through the drill. We've been requested for information and that's not gonna be a problem whatsoever. That building is gonna triple in capacity for water and sewer, somewhere thereabouts. Uh, but one of our main lines runs kind of through there behind the mill house. So holding the capacity is not a problem at all there.
One follow up please is just a pet peeve of mine that's been for years. Is Chapman Street ever gonna get larger? Especially up closer to when you're going up to Main Street. It's just so narrow.
I know, um, I, I, it's something that, uh, well, I've been busy with everything else. It's actually on my list to talk to the Chief of Staff Laterno.
Yeah, I have it on my list for you too. So I, uh, Director Warner referenced earlier that I got everybody in the same room. There's kind of three different things going on on Main Street. And I know, you know, one of the things we talked about at the beginning for this internal group was it's gonna be confusing to the public, but it's okay as long as we know what's going on. Like, if you're at this, so we had three workshops over the course of the end of January into February. One was about downtown revitalization. One was specifically about parking with the consultants that we have working on the parking study. And one was specifically about the mainstream, Main Street DOT project. So we all are meeting frequently to stay on the same page. And I make everybody do a, you know, little roundabout and talk about where we are at, even if we think everybody already knows. And it's actually been helping a lot. So one of the things that has come up in a conversation that I'll bring up at our next group meeting is some information regarding the Wilson's project and or, um, other, other parts of that Main Street area and what might happen with Chapman Street. So there's some choices. Stan Tech, the parking consultants have been brought in the loop about it and they'll weigh in with the science and best practices that they know. And so the answer is maybe, you know, maybe, um, there'll definitely be some reconfiguration of things there.
Council Gullum.
Hey, everyone. Um, just wanna start by thanking, that's strange, I can suddenly see myself. I wanna start by thanking, uh, both of you and all of you for, uh, for this project. It's really exciting and, um, although I haven't been able to attend the workshops, I really appreciate how much you've been working to engage the public in this process. And just one question, um, Director Adams, you mentioned the Hope Street Parking Lot and I know that, housing in this town is very, the city is very important, especially for many reasons and sustainability and the growth of our town. And, and I'm wondering if the parking lot is currently being considered for housing? And if so, at what stage of the conversation? That's that.
Sure. Uh, where we are right now is before anybody set their eyes on using it for a non-parking use, we wanted to wait till we saw what the parking study came out of. I know that, uh, there's been a lot of conversation about maybe we don't need this as a parking lot anymore, but we really felt like we needed the good data that would come out of the parking management study before we made any decisions about how we might guide the, the community in the future use of that. So stay tuned.
Okay. Do you know when the parking study is anticipated to be completed?
Yes, we're expecting that to be done by the end of June of twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
Also, Labhansky.
Councilor Tranzow is before me. I think. Okay, um, so first, uh, is, is this close enough? There we go. Uh, first, uh, Danny, I disagree with you about whether or not it's important that the public understands. I'm always in favor of the public understanding, just to stick up for that. Um, although I understand your logic here. Couple of brief comments on the design. One is that when you have, and, and I'll, I'll just say, these next few things, I'm speaking as someone who walks down Main Street frequently and takes my electric scooter, effectively a bicycle down Main Street frequently. I think I probably do that more than any other counselor except Counselor Ricketts. And what I notice is that the bike lanes are outside of the parking spots. And I know what the advantages are. I've seen the research. And my concern is that most people are not used to it, especially in this area. And so if there's a bicycle coming, someone opens their car door, they're not looking, and that can cause an accident. And so I just wanna make you aware that this is something that I think about, um, leads me to my first question. Uh, so I noticed that there was a number on there. How many parking spots are on Main Street currently? What is the number that it will go to?
As, excuse me, a little harsh. Um, as we, uh, head for twenty five percent design, I, I would be amiss if I sat here and gave you a percentage of spaces if we went to parallel parking that, that we would be less, I guess, than the, the angled parking. That, because we, we're, we're taking into a lot of things in consideration. We have bus stops. We have, uh, actually handicap parking with, which takes up a little more, uh, space than a normal parking space. Um, and honestly, uh, as we head towards the second workshop, we're gonna have a better number on that. We're not there yet.
Got it.
You know, I don't wanna tell you thirty percent less, twenty percent less, and, and, and I, I would be amiss because I honestly can't give you a solid number right now. As we, as we work through this workshop, there was about two hundred sticky notes on these boards here where, when the public came and they had all these ideas. So our consultant firm is taking all these ideas and trying to meld them into one thing and figure out, okay, what, what works with the standards that we've been given under this project? So, um, I, I hope that helps you. We're, we're working towards that.
Absolutely. What's the date of the second workshop?
The second workshop is June. It's, it hasn't, it doesn't have a date. It's just June of twenty twenty three, but we'll put it out there on the website and so on and so forth.
Got it.
Can I also hop in on that and just say that, you know, there's the number of parking spaces, but there's also how we manage those parking spaces. And that's a piece of this study. It's not just how, how many there are and where they are. It's how we manage them so that we have good turn and over, that it's, it's responding to the demand and the supply so that we're better managing. We're looking at how we're gonna be managing those spaces. Are they gonna be, you know, fifteen minute spots? Are they gonna be, you know, long-term parking? You know, what, what's the mix that we need in the downtown? So, um, I know everyone gets a little fixated on the number of parking spaces, but we're looking not just at the number, but also how to better manage the asset, parking assets that we have.
Absolutely. And I don't park on Main Street. I'm just speaking for constituents that have contacted me. I remember you said that this is curb to curb. I take it to mean no sidewalk improvements as part of this process. Is that correct?
Not exactly.
Well, uh, under the, the TPO project, that's correct.
Be considered non-participatory, non-participating.
Right. But, but there are certain things that are, may go into the sidewalks and areas to meet the standards. Like I had mentioned, the radius is going into the side streets, Chapman, Wells, uh, all those Conway. They don't meet the standard anymore. That's why we have this, these blind spots constantly when somebody's walking out in front of you. It happens to me too, and I'm like, this isn't cool. So yes, there is gonna be some develop, uh, redevelopment of, of the intersecting streets and whatnot that's gonna affect beyond the sidewalk. Now, it's not to say that Mass DOT doesn't recommend in a scoping, what we call a scoping meeting going forward, that they recommend some changes, which is gonna bump the cost of the project up, but that will be their recommendations.
That's fine. The reason I raise it is because the section of the sidewalk on Main Street, the south side, basically running from Mile Street to the end, uh, the, the west end. So the western section of the south side of the street is very bumpy. It's dangerous. It's not accessible to wheelchairs. And I could see people tripping and falling and potentially suing the city. And if you're listening, I didn't say that. But my point is that, um, it seems like if we're going to redo it for all the different kinds of vehicles, we might as well, uh, also do it for the people who are walking because that inaccessibility, it's not just that it's not in good condition, it's that it's very difficult to use as a sidewalk for anyone with any mobility issues. So I, I would encourage that to be part of it. I'm gonna skip my next question because I think it's better for the, uh, meeting that you discussed in a couple of months. Will the city have to borrow any money for this project?
I haven't requested. That would be whatever, uh, would be recommended by the Finance Director when I request the second half of the engineering design.
And I take it that she's not available to ask that question.
That'd be next year.
Yeah, we, it's actually, it's not, it's the current, not the current. And, and just to address the sidewalks that you were talking about, we did start those repairs late this fall. Uh, we're doing that in-house. We've, we've started. You'll see a, a good section from, from Mile Street down to, I believe, the church or Conan Company. We, we took care of a lot of the issues late, late this fall.
Yeah, I, I did notice those. I just didn't think that it really went as far as I would have liked to see. And I have one final question. It's very simple. Will any trees have to be cut down as part of this project?
So that's an interesting question. It depends how close the trees are to these, these intersections that I spoke about. It doesn't mean they're gonna get cut down. Uh, they may be able to be moved. The intent isn't to cut down the trees that we finally were able to grow down there for twenty five years. I've watched it. Finding trees that can survive in that environment is tough and I think we've accomplished that, but, um, the intent is not to lose any trees.
So in other words, you don't know at this time.
Yeah, they'll be moved. We will not lose numbers. They'll be moved or we will plant, plant new ones if they can't be moved, if they have to be.
Councilor Shonzo.
A, uh, yeah, Councilor Rick is gonna jump on my, uh, my thought here about Chapman's Street since, uh, I guess this is kind of two parts is, is one, yes, if, if any of that, uh, widened. I think that is the worst street to try to drive down and should never have had parking on both sides. But on a short term, before this happens, whoever might be listening from the PD, I would encourage some enforcement of the, if you're going north on it, right off of Main Street, the right side there, that's a loading zone and a no parking zone is covered all the time, all the time with trucks and cars and whatever, like especially after Taylor's closed before, um, it makes it very hard to negotiate for, oh, I drove a truck and a trailer for a while, not even a tractor trailer. So I can't imagine how they're doing it. That on the short term and then maybe for the long-term projection, like you're saying, uh, adjusting those, those areas for more modern use. Um, but also team with that, since it's part of downtown revitalization, I think I've brought this up before, but the pit on Chapman Street, is that had all moved anywhere, maybe within this, uh, Wilson sale? Cause I believe, weren't they, were they the last ones that had that?
It is part of the, uh, the redevelopment of the Wilson's property. We'll see a site plan on that at the, uh, end of March.
Thank you.
You're not the first to ask that question.
It's one of my favorite parts about the project, frankly.
Good.
I do wanna say that, um, uh, we're aware of the Chapman Street issue and I do get, we get phone calls and emails from people in the area and I text for parking enforcement frequently on that.
I know a lot of it happens on the weekends when there's not as much parking enforcement.
Yeah.
And so I, I don't know.
I also just want.
Pull.
I just wanna address in the, uh, Council of Pansky said. I just want to address in the, uh, Council of Panski said, and I just want to clarify that um, what I meant by the public not understanding. I was talking in terms of those public workshops because people heard about three different workshops over the course of three weeks. And I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that we can help whoever shows up if they thought they were here because of Main Street. And it turns out they showed up and we're talking about parking. We steered them in and still wanted to get their feedback. So and that actually did work. Like some people came in and weren't really sure which workshop they were at, but they definitely wanted to get their their thoughts out there. So it's a complicated thing. We talked a lot about it regarding communications, whether we should name it one big thing. Should we like try and differentiate between the three projects more? And we decided let's just go the way we're going and um, help clarify on the way individually with people.
Counselor Bullock.
Yeah, thank you all. Um, this is all so exciting. I just wanted to say, I have one question and I wanted to say one thing, which is that um, you know, we bought our house close to downtown because we had kids that we knew were going to at some point be able to go places without us. Um, and I cannot wait for my kids to be able to walk to the library, to walk to the skate park. I'm so sick of driving my kids over to Turner's and I would never let them go over that road on a bicycle or on a skateboard. So um, you know, what we bought our house on Hope Street when there was a skate park on Hope Street and it closed that same year. And uh, I just, I know there's so much controversy about every single little thing that happens. But I'm so excited, and this is exactly the type of thing we need to attract families to Greenfield and to keep families in Greenfield. I grew up in the city. It's a really hard thing to have my children have a really, really different life and access to really a lot less um, things that they can do independently because of transportation and um, you know, a more rural living. Um, the the only question I have, one also super happy to hear about the pit being disappearing from existence. Although I will miss um, the jokes about the pit in downtown Greenfield. Um, but I'm wondering, you might have said this, the timeline for the Wilson's construction. Can you give us a reminder on when that's set to start and if there is an end date in sight for that? I know it's not just a city project, but if you know that timeline.
Uh, I want to make the point that it's it's not a city project at all. It's it's a the Franklin Community Co-op and the Community Builders with uh Mass Development, serving as the the land bank that's holding the building as they divide it into condominiums. Um, we're expecting that the co-op, their timeline is that they will actually a close and start the work on the building at the end of 2023. Um, they had been talking about October, uh, but I also want to be very respectful that they have their work to continue to do. And I don't want to put words in their mouths, but that's the best understanding that we have is that they'll start it in October. I'm sorry, I did I say 22, October 23?
Yep.
October 2023 is when they'll actually close and start working on that. Um, they're talking about it taking about a year. So they're going to continue to occupy Greenfield's market where it is until they're ready to move into their new facility. We do know that the housing is going to take a little longer to get started. They're talking about starting in 2025. Uh, and I would imagine that that just by the scale of that project, it's probably a two year build out. So.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
And Councilor Gullum will finish with you. Did you have something?
Yeah, this is actually for you and Kathy. I just got a text from uh, Councilor Justorger, who's not here because she has COVID. And she says that she's trying to listen on GCTV and there's no audio.
GCTV is having technical issues. We're aware of that.
Okay, just want to make sure you know.
Thank you. All right.
Can I hop onto my last slide?
Sure, you you've got a couple, a last slide on the downtown?
Yes, yes. So the idea was to hand things off to uh,
Yeah.
Director Warner, so he could talk about the Main Street. And then we sort of flowed into um, questions and answers, uh, which which is fine. It was perfectly fine. But I just, you know, like I said, the reason we're here tonight briefing you on this is that we really would like to hear your input and feedback. And and I I hope we've answered most of your questions. If anything else comes up, please don't hesitate to contact us. But it really talks about where we're going with our future actions. And I'm just going to call your attention to the draft, uh, page 17. It's the last page of the report that we sent out to see where we're going. And we're, we're using this as sort of our game plan for where we're going to be moving forward. You know, now that we know what the physical changes are going to look like in the timeframe on that, it's time to put the the supports around that. So we were ramping up and continue to ramp up how we work with the downtown business community. You know, the cultural district is really coming into its own and starting to, we're talking about using that more actively in terms of branding our downtown. Clearly, um, we know that you can't just build a physical environment, that you need to build a civic environment and looking to have that happen more extensively in the downtown. But this is our roadmap of where we go or where we see ourselves going over the next uh five plus years. And uh, like I said, I welcome any sort of comment or feedback. We'll be putting this into final form probably in early April and make it uh as a regular sort of guidance document. Like I said, it's really sort of a subset of sustainable greenfield implementation can um committees work um, to really use this as our 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 roadmap for what we're going to be doing in our downtown. And I really appreciate that everyone who came out, came out and and what my consult, oh, and I'm, I'm sorry. I forgot to introduce Emily Ennis is our consultant. She's also been listening in on this. Uh, Emily, do you have anything you want to toss in and add to anything that we've said?
Just very quickly, uh, first of all, good evening, uh, councilors. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. And I've certainly enjoyed working with MJ and her team and the community of Greenfield on this project. Just to add that this page is pulling actions from the public comments that we heard, both from the physical meeting and the online uh questionnaire that we did. You did have, as MJ mentioned earlier, some planning efforts in 2021, uh, 2020, 2021 and 2022 that also have recommendations. So this document should be seen as pairing with those documents. Um, but adding that community input that couldn't happen during uh, during COVID. So we uh, we, as MJ said, we're very much looking forward to your comments on this and then finishing it so you all can take it and move forward with it. So thank you for having me here tonight.
We appreciate that. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to MJ's second part, and then we'll come back to Director, the uh Chief of Staff, Letturno, to follow up with some answers that uh she's received. Um. MJ, we asked uh at the chairs meeting, in specific, um, we're aware that this city has an emergency plan. But specifically, um, it was brought to our attention, do we have um, a cold weather plan? And is that implementation of our cold weather plan done by um, us? Or do we rely on um, outsourcing it?
Okay, um, when you're talking about a cold weather plan, I'm assuming that you're talking about the homeless and the unsheltered individuals who are in our community. And and I'll share with you that the the way it has been set up to operate is um, we work with a number of social service agencies that work closely with uh the unsheltered population. Service Net has been running the shelter on Well Street, and that has always been our our, that's the place you go to. I mean, that is the the first call when someone is unsheltered and needs um, need services is the 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 answer has been you call into a service net, and if they can accommodate you in the shelter, they will. Uh, if they can't accommodate you in the shelter, they are, they have been responsible for connecting with um, CHD, the Center for Human Development, who runs the hotels in the region uh, and making those connections. Um, we also um, work with Elliot Homeless Outreach Services, and they go out uh and meet with people out in the in the rough and and are a part of the team that when it gets cold out, they're encouraging people to come in and get out of the cold. So um, I'll share with you that Service Net had historically done more significant outreach when the weather got cold. Um, that's something that they were not able to uh perform on this past winter. Um, you, as you're aware, that they are sort of ramping down in terms of the services that they're providing on the homeless frontier in in Greenfield. And um, so even though they are the first point of contact in terms of uh, someone in need of shelter, they don't, they hadn't been able to do active outreach when the weather got cold and dangerous over the winter. Uh, we do know that our our police department is out there at times. Um, Elliot Homeless Outreach Services staff are out there. And we know that there's a number of people in the community who also reach out to people who are unsheltered. The good news, that you know, we sort of quite honestly lived along this past winter, knowing that there was going to be a change in the services provided to homeless individuals in Greenfield uh that becomes effective April 1st. We have clinical support options that's taking over uh homeless, uh, the homeless shelter operations on Well Street on April 1st. Um, and they'll be, they are in the process of staffing up. We also um, when the state did their new contracts for the new services for homeless individuals uh out here in Western Mass, they also created a new program or have funded a new program. I won't say it's absolutely created yet, but it's actually going to be a um, intake uh for the four western counties in Massachusetts. It'll be staffed, uh, staffed phone number 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that will be run by the Center for Human Development. Um, and the the idea of that project or that service will be someone doesn't have a place, someone is unsheltered, call goes into uh CHD. They will be the front door for services for people who are unsheltered. With the first focus on doing a prevention, meaning is there a way for that person to prevent, you know, not become homeless in their current situation? The second will be diversion, meaning that um, if there, is there someplace they can be diverted to? Is there another family member? Is there another place for them to go? And then the third aspect of that will be triage, meaning if that they are going to be unsheltered and don't have a safe place to stay, that that one point of contact will will know where, what shelter space is available in Western Mass, be able to place and arrange transit for that individual to get into that uh shelter. Or if a shelter space is not available, make temporary arrangements with hotel to, in order to accommodate, um, to make sure that that unsheltered individual uh is not out in the rough when they need not to be. So I I think we're about to see a a big change in terms of who's doing what. And as part of that, the mayor has asked that we pull together a meeting of all the social services uh agencies that will be working on this. So we'll be convening a meeting with CSO, clinical support options. And and I want to be clear that I'm speaking about homeless individuals. There's a whole different structure for homeless families uh that that the city is not involved in. But um, as we work with the individuals, uh, the mayor's asked that we convene a meeting and we're arranging to do that with clinical support options who runs, will be running Well Street. They also run a program called Safe Havens, which is placing um, individuals who are who are not able to stay in congregate shelters, but placing them in in safe homes, other, in in other safe haven places. Uh, clinical support also does a lot of work with our um mentally challenged individuals in the and the mentally and mentally challenged in the area. So they're, they're very much connected to a broad range of services that they provide uh on their own. So there'll be clinical support options. There will be, we'll pull um Elliot uh Outreach Services, who are the folks who go out to the encampments and really deal with uh the folks who are living in the rough and making connections with them. Uh, we'll also pull in, there's a new director of the Continuum of Care, which is the HUD funded um, programming for the chronically, the chronic homeless in the region. Uh, they'll be involved in that meeting. Uh, the the Greenfield Police Department Officer Matt Lowellin will be uh participating in that. And the idea is once now that we have this big transition happening and who's providing services, that the city is going to be convening a regular meeting to make sure that we're coordinating and that there's, there's an ongoing communication and a good working relationship built between the different social services agencies that all need to work together effectively so that we don't have people falling between the cracks. So.
Thank you. MJ, specifically, um, we had a cold weather incident uh a month or so ago where we had temperatures drop severely cold. And were we prepared or did we lack a warming center? There was a lot of confusion about warming centers and closing and not knowing people were coming. And and it was, was that planned? Did that fall through something or were we just not ready?
Well, the the challenge with having a warming center is you need to have staffing for a warming center. And that has been the rate limiting factor for us for several years. Um, it's, it's, we, we don't have the capacity to to do a warming center. What we do have is warm places where we've recommended that people can go and and get warm. Uh, library has been standard and usual, the transit center. Um, you know, there, there's some um, social service agencies around the downtown area that open up and make their spaces available uh so that people can come and get warm. Salvation Army, a very critical player in all of this. Um, but we do not set up a specific warming center. And the goal is, is that, I know we had the two incidents, you know, the very cold weather around Christmas time. Uh, and then uh, a couple of weeks ago where we had the very cold weather, we, we had, we had it set up. I mean, we had the system in place that if people contacted the service net, that there was an arrangement to get those folks, you know, in and out of the cold, either at the Well Street site or connected to a hotel setup. Um, so those were available. My understanding is in the last cold weather event, there was no one left out in the cold.
Thank you. Did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I wanted to add, we actually, the last one or two very cold um, cold snaps that we had, this building also, the senior center, Hope McCary, said it was open to anyone, not just for the seniors.
All right, we have um, a couple of questions on this topic, Council Labinski and then Council Bullock.
Yeah, so my um, my, my questions relate to the the warming centers. Thank you for bringing that up. President Quinn, um, a, a, a number of places, the library, the transit center here have been mentioned. Were those open at night? No, no. So we have no options at night. So uh, I, I, two, two things about that. Um, the, the main one is it's one thing to have this focus on people who are homeless for obvious reasons, but that's an ongoing issue. That's not for the most part an issue only when the temperature goes to levels we haven't seen in several years. What I think we ought to be concerned about and what we had a little bit of this happen a month ago, is if there were to be a loss of power during a cold snap. And that can happen when, for example, there are sustained winds of 40 and 50 miles an hour that we don't normally see in the valley. Why is this important? Because even though this cold weather is becoming less frequent, uh, what's changed over the, just even in my lifetime, is that a lot more houses are heated solely through electricity, including both of the buildings that I own. And more importantly, most of the homes that are heated with gas and oil, those are powered by electricity. So when the power goes out, if we were to see a citywide power outage, we would see no heat in the entire city. And if we're not prepared for that, then we don't have any plan to keep any of us alive. And to that, to that point, um, whether or not we can staff a building shouldn't be the limiting factor. And I, I think it's kind of a disgrace to say that, and I'll specifically say why. Because we heard earlier in this presentation that we had these heroic efforts by Danny and a whole group of other people to stay up late and work overtime to get the streets plowed. But if we're more interested in getting the streets plowed than human life, and we can't have that factor in and have those same people work overtime to keep people alive, then we're doing it wrong. We ought to fix that. And we ought to, we ought to have, be able to say that that can start tonight, should there be another one? Because that's not anything we have to do differently. We just have to care more about life than snow.
Uh, I'll, I'll share with you that um, the Well Street Shelter is open 7/24. So anyone who wanted to go over there and to be warm through the night, we're welcomed in. There was, there was, there was the capacity to do that. So what, I don't talk about the shelters being a warming center because it's a shelter, but it is a place where people can go and get out of the weather. Some people choose not to do that.
And that's even if there's not a bed for them?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, but again, we need to have the capacity. If there were to be a power outage, we've got 18,000 people that need somewhere to go. We need to have backup generators, and this is not something that might happen. It's something that. not something that might happen. It's something that almost happened a month ago.
Well, I believe that we have an emergency, I, I, I believe Chief Shran is our emergency management director and.
I was gonna say that. I was gonna say, if something like that catastrophic happened, we would up an E O C, and emergency management would take over. And there would be made, we saw a small version of that when COVID first happened, when things shut down, we upped it and it started, you know, a lot of people have been trained beyond just the emergent, emergency management staff on what happens and how to line up and get ready to kind of do all hands on deck in that kind of an emergency. So that's what would happen in that, really severe, but you're right, potentially plausible situation.
All right, Councilor Bullock?
Yeah, thank you, MJ, for sharing that plan. I think there's been like a lot of conversation going around about like, what is the plan? Do we have a plan? Who's responsible for it? And so I wanted just like everyone on the council to have a level set on what our plan is. So I really appreciate you sharing. And I want to be clear that my intention with asking you to share and bringing it up at committee chairs was not to say that the city didn't do diligence in this realm, because I do think that it's the city's responsibility to make the plan. And then when the plan, if the plan doesn't work and it's on other players, there's like, that's, that's what I think we're running into this, this winter, is that we, you know, you made a plan, a plan was in place, you and others made a plan, a plan was in place. And, and service providers, direct outreach folks are running into the procedurally, it's not, it's not acting appropriately. And so those are sort of the bigger players. So the first is, I would love to be at that meeting that gets pulled together, either in a city council capacity or in my base day capacity, whichever is more appropriate. And then, you know, I, there's this question of warming centers, which I've talked to some folks on the ground, I've talked to some folks that are a part of the Small Town Housing Working Group and some social service agencies. I, you know, I think that we could potentially pull together a plan if the city had a place where we could have a warming shelter. And I'm, where we could staff it, either with volunteers that we get, that we get appropriately like, you know, trained and, and quarried or whatever we have to do for the city liability. But I think that that piece is really important because just from doing, you know, five years of housing in Greenfield, we do have a lot of folks who are not going to go to the shelter. And as much as I think the shelter opens its door as much as it can, there is times when the door is not open to the shelter. There, I've experienced times where I've brought people there, there's no more beds. It might not been when it's 17 degrees or negative 17 degrees out, but there is nights where, when I was working at Community Action, I had to drop someone off at the park at 6:00 PM because they couldn't get into the shelter. And I know this winter that people, especially people with families are running into this because the statewide housing system is just so overburdened. Someone said the other day in a meeting I was in that this is a humanitarian crisis. So I just think we're at the level of the city where we made the plan, the social service agencies are overburdened, and we need to really tapes, take an extraordinary step and see if there's a way for us. I mean, the good thing is we're, we're in, we're halfway through March. We'd like to think we're not going to get much more cold weather. But there is going to be other weather events that might call for there to be shelters that people can walk into and spend hours. And I'm recalling when we had that October storm some years ago, and MIMO was activated, that like the high school opened and the middle school opened and there was warming shelters in there. I know we had no power for five days. So I remember going there and getting bottled water because our water wasn't working and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think there's an appetite for folks on the ground, community members who are interfacing with folks that are on the street and for social service agencies that are not directly in housing, but working with people with high housing needs and acuity, that there could be a, a potential alternative staffing plan that, that could be pulled together. And I just say this because I, you know, I, I, I know you know, but I experienced this with someone who was postpartum, who was discharged to attend this, this winter. And it really, for me, became the lightning rod of like, we're going to have a loss of life again. We've had a loss of life here not too long ago. And it's, I don't want to be a public servant who didn't address this if that, if that happens. So I really, I just do appreciate the work you've done on this. I know it's a lot to coordinate with these, with these social service agencies and state agencies. And I'm happy to attend that meeting. And I'm happy to help coordinate a plan to figure out, well, how can we get a warming center that's activated at a certain threshold and staff it appropriately?
Thank you. Councilor, it's finally.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I know when Hurricane Irene hit, the city, you know, pulled together and, you know, we made sure that everybody could get dry clothes and bottled water, everything, and things worked out. And then our own council, probably six or seven years ago, we all got on the common and we had people bring blankets and hoodies and sweaters in so that we could give them to the shelter. And so I just feel like I really live in a great community that when things do happen, this community does come forward as long as they know what the need is, whether it's in the middle of the summer when it's 90 degrees and the homeless need bottled water and such, or right now when they're bringing out tarps and tents and extra blankets out to all the different homeless shelters in different locations. I just want the community to know that, that is happening. And, and, you know, I've called them and they've come to the house so that I could donate money right then so that they could go shopping and get more. And so anybody that's really willing to help and cares about the situation and you could do anything at all, we do have the people that are willing to do it. The police, the fire, everyone knows where all these little encampments are. And so everybody can do their part. It's not just some agency or a group of people or this, it's all on the city. You know, it is a community thing and we do work well together. And I've seen it in action more than once. Thank you.
All right. Chief Estefano, you had an answer to a question and then I'm going to move on.
I do. Deputy Chief Gordon answered the questions that were put forward earlier. No, we are not charged anything for the Mass State Police coverage. And then the trailer, as Penny said, is manned 24/7 by a fleet trooper responsible for the truck. And then it's manned by up to four troopers, 3:00 AM to 7:00 AM.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start our public comment. I ask that when you come forward, you state your name and your address for the record. Elizabeth C. Elizabeth, are you here? All right, if you come back. Judy Draper? You're all set? All right. Susan Orf Gaffdick from Zuma. Susan, are you there?
Yes, I am. I'd like to thank the counselors for giving me the opportunity to speak and thank you for all the work that you do. I'm Susan Orf Gaffdick. I live at 45 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. Last May, after the announcement of the verdict in the Buchanan trial, I stated that I thought Chief Hague should no longer be chief of Greenfield's Police Department. That was based on more than the court determination that the chief had used discriminatory practices in dealing with Mr. Buchanan. The court records put forward a series of administrative personnel decisions that Chief Hague had made, which I believe was bad for the police department and bad for Greenfield. He had discriminated and he had also proven himself to be a bad personnel manager. We recently learned that Chief Hague did not show up to two early March meetings, one of which he called and one where he was a key figure, and that these meetings were of great importance regarding the lack of police coverage, Greenfield Police coverage in the 3:00 AM to 7:00 AM period. This was not a minor question. That had been made clear to Chief Hague by the citizenry and by the city council in January. To not be present at these meetings was at best an affront to those who had taken the issue of the safety of Greenfield's citizens seriously. And at worst, it was a sign that Chief Hague did not understand the gravity of the situation he had initiated. The chief did not inform the mayor nor Deputy Chief Gordon that he would not be attending these meetings. He did not act in a responsible manner to his staff or his superiors. And, and this is no small thing. He is in a leadership position that certainly was not leadership. And as I said, last May, it is time for Chief Hague to go. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Pamela Goodwin? Pamela, are you there?
Yes, I'm there, here. So sorry, I couldn't find the mute. Zoom is all different on the phone. I also want to thank everyone for all their hard work. And I want to compliment President Gwynn, when he gave the opposing viewpoint here in the mayor's state of the city. I have a few things that I'm going to talk quickly. I had another broken meter today and I had to go downtown and fertile snow, which I didn't mind, to go to the copycat thing. I put in my quarter and it said failed. So I guess it's one of the many. I did go to the first time and I loved it. There were hundreds, it looked like, of sticky notes. We talked about pedestrians being hit by cars. I'm also grateful that several counselors said we need bike paths because I have taken my life in my hand on a regular bike. And I'm in favor of doing something so you can bike around the city. And I was told, go out to GCC. I cannot put two children, grandchildren's bikes on my car and my bike and take them out to Greenfield community just so we can be alive while we bike. I also am alarmed that after months and months of saying that we would like the Hope Street parking lot to eventually be low income housing, that there's now thinking that's where people need to park to get to our new library. I mean, month after month, we have talked about housing. And I know I personally have often talked about it. I do belong to housing Greenfield. We just had an hour and a half meeting. And let's see, I also want to say, I'm very thankful that the bottom three floors of the garage are available during a big snowstorm. I personally had to use it. I drove all the way up to the third one and almost thought, I'm going to be on the fourth. Are there any, it was totally filled up. And I found the spot. And that's where I have to move my car. And I, this is off topic, but my Prius just had the catalytic converter cut off of it. And that's going on around our town quite a bit. We're still, I today was again on the phone with Detective Perrington. Also, in terms of a warming station, I'm alarmed that we don't have a plan. I have a friend up in Charlemont, she has, she's on 24/7, big tanks of oxygen, a four-wheel drive, could not get into her driveway. Her brother walked in and tried to get the, the generator going. She is supposed to get power back up in that house at 11:00 tonight. And cold rain, I mean, all of these other places, even Shelburne on the Buckland side in the hill, two and a half feet with no power until 6:30. It is not just keeping people warm. It is, it is being sure people have their oxygen. It is being sure that cell phones can be charged in this day and age because many people don't have a landline. Yeah. Oh, is it over?
It is.
Okay. I want to say that mixed income is not the same as condos. And I heard both of those used together in Wilsons. So I, I'm going to Beacon Hill tomorrow to lobby on a numerous legislation things. Thank you for letting me speak.
Wahab?
Yeah, I'm pushing that button on that microphone, right there until it turns green. Perfect.
I do have to get my name and, okay, so my name is Wahab Minos. I live down the street, 162 Davis. Couple things. One, very exciting projects that are happening. It's, as someone who's grown up in Greenfield, amazing to see that the face of the town is changing. I think it would just be great if there was more input from the community members, whether that be business owners, local business owners, whether that be homeowners, whose traffic would be affected, whether that just be, you know, residents of Greenfield. I think there needs to be more open forums and open dialogue when it comes to that. Second, so the face of the town is changing. That's amazing. That's great. There's a lot of money and capital and time that is being invested in that. However, just as a concern of a citizen who actually operates a business there on Main Street and is in contact with a lot of the customers who go there and a lot of people who are in and out of there. There is a huge drug issue and a homeless population issue on Main Street. And I think no matter how many beautiful buildings you set up, no matter how many shops you set up, if, if people do not feel safe walking on Main Street with their families, with their children, because they feel like, whether or not that is the reality or not, but the perception is that there's drug dealing on Main Street, there's prostitution on Main Street, there are horrible things that are happening on Main Street, and they don't want to expose their children to that and their families to that. I know my family, for example, my niece, who no longer lives in Greenfield, but she's never walked down Main Street. And that wasn't the reality when I was a child. And that could also just be, you know, people are just being more and more reared it out. You know, you see something on social media, you're like, oh my God, the world is coming to that. But also, I think it is in it, it is a real issue. I do see drug deals happening outside of my store at Country Mart, like, and I stop it, I'm like, what the hell are you doing? But it's happening all over. And what are we going to do to address that, other than just having a cop stand there? Because clearly that's not enough. And actually, just having like right in front of our store, cops stand there, we appreciate it. If anything escalates, if anything goes crazy, they're there to help. But also, it's a deterrent for our business because people feel like they're being policed. No one wants to feel like they're being policed while they're shopping, while they're out with their family. So I think it's not only about the incentives, and not only about the investments that are happening in town, but we also need to take into consideration the social issues that are surround why Main Street isn't the way it should be. I don't want to keep on going, but I went into Turner's the other day and it's beautiful. Didn't it look like an East Boston area? Why can't we do that?
For your time. Thank you. All right, I believe that is the end of public comment unless I've missed someone. Seeing none? And second readings and get those taken care of. Counselor Bottomley will be taking care of the ways and means pieces with some assistance from Counselor Tron. So if needed, so Counselor Bottomley, let me get some direction for you. The one that's in red, Clerk Scott, which was withdrawn from the appropriation request, do we need to take no action?
It's been published, so it should be read, but it's not in the package to be voted on. So read it as published and then the second reading, you'll notice it's admitted.
So this is for the public hearing readings, Counselor Bottomley?
So do I need to open the public hearing or just?
You just want to read page 37, which is, we do the second reading first and then do, I do the second reading and then open the public hearing or I open the public hearing and then do the second reading?
Read the public hearing notice.
Open the public.
Open the public hearing.
Read the second reading.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so public hearing in accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 15th, 2023 at 6:30 PM at John's on Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and Zoom. To receive public input on the following, appropriate 200,000 from borrowing to pay costs of a lead service line inventory and replacement plan program. Approved payment of invoice for Connecticut Business Systems of $104 from fiscal year 23 Veterans Various Paper Products. And transfer 16,865.78 from the fiscal year 23 01001320.5781 Reserve Fund to the fiscal year 23 Library Account 01006100.5241 Building and Grounds Maintenance. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, March 15th, 2023 at 6:30 PM at John's on Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street and Zoom. Materials may be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square from 94 on Monday through Friday or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Dan Gwynne, Greenfield City Council President.
I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:21 PM. Is there any member of the public here or on Zoom that wishes to address any of these items which were read by Counselor Bottomley? Seeing none? I will close the public hearing at 8:22 PM. Counselor Bottomley, I believe now we just move on. Second readings of those motions.
City Council, second reading, March 15th, 2023. Approved payment of invoice for Connecticut Business Systems of 104 from fiscal year 23 Veterans Various Paper Products. Transfer 16,865.78 from the fiscal year 23 01001320.5781 Reserve Fund to the fiscal year 23 Library Account 01006100.5241 Building and Grounds Maintenance.
All right. We are going to return in five minutes and start motions, orders and resolutions. We'll take a five minute recess. Thank you. We're missing Counselor Lapiensky. Also, Clerk Scott, can you verify that my counselors that are Zoom are on?
Counselors, all right, counselors who are online, can you please respond? Counselor Golub?
I'm here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo, are you attending? I see that you're logged in.
He just got reconnected. Oh, there he is.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, thank you.
Moving forward. Once again, that was just because we have a quorum situation if I don't have response. All right, motions, orders and resolutions. Counselor Bottomley, you're going to talk a lot tonight, my friend. All right.
Ah, yes. So order number fiscal year 23-101. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council rescinds the following order voted during the regular City Council meeting held on January 18th, 2023. That order is order number FY23-077. On January 18th, 2023, the Greenfield City Council on a motion from Counselor 4G, second by Counselor Disorga, it was unanimously voted that it be ordered. Upon recommendation of Mayor Weida Gardner and in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, the sum of 16,865,078 be transferred from the fiscal year 23 01001320.5781 Reserve Fund to the FY23 Library Account 01002440.5200 Building and Grounds Maintenance. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts?
That was 16,865.78. All right, the motion's been made in seconded. Do we have seconded by Ricketts? Is there any recommendation from? Anyone on this? Nothing? Okay.
I think it was just an account.
It was. I'm just following protocol. Is there any discussion on this? Any rationale? Clerk Scott, we're rescinding the order. That's it. Yes, it was an account number inaccuracy. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion carries. Counselor Bottomley?
Order number fiscal year 23-102. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weida Gardner and in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, FY23 Reserve Fund Transfer Request. Move that it be ordered that the sum of 16,865.78 be transferred from the fiscal year 23 01001320.5781 Reserve Fund to the fiscal year 23 Library Account 01006100.5241 Building and Grounds Maintenance. Reserve fund balance is 60,613 dollars prior to transfer from reserve fund to weights and measures of 14,387. Balance in the library, building and grounds maintenance, 3,035.4 cents. Majority vote required.
Second up.
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Any rationale on this?
Uh, there wasn't much discussion. It passed recommendation unanimously.
Is there any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Counselor Bottomley?
F. Order number fiscal year 23-099. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weida Gardner, in order to approve payment of a prior year invoice in the amount of $104, ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve the payment of prior year invoice for Connecticut Business Systems CBS in the amount of $104 to be paid from the fiscal year 23 Veterans Various Paper Products Account Number Available budget in Veterans Various Paper Products is currently $350. Two thirds vote required.
Second.
Thank you, Don. The motion's been made in the seconded. Was there any discussion or recommendation on this?
Uh, this was also unanimous recommendation from Ways and Means.
Is it Counselor Lapiensky?
I would just like to make the point that because this requires nine votes, it will have to be unanimous tonight. And am I correct on that? So you're going to want to roll call and make sure you get nine yeses.
Yeah, I think we have about that. So, okay, roll call's been called.
But I'm only doing that for your sake.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Are there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote counts. Clerk Scott?
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Lapiensky?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
President Gwynn?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Counselor Bullock, are you prepared to read the next motion?
Yep, let me just get to the right screen here.
Page 46.
Yep. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor to the zoning board of appeals. Victor Muschella, term to expire June 30th, 2025. Mark Maloney, term to expire December 31st, 2025. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts?
Is there any discussion or recommendation from committee on this?
This was a unanimous, both were unanimous positive recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from any of the counselors present? Seeing none? Would you? Well, nice to meet you, sir. Feel free to, we appreciate you coming. We appreciate you stepping up and taking on a role that's a vital part of what we do. The Zoning Appeals Board of Appeals has a big chore and we thank you for stepping up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. I'm glad you stopped and waited through our first hour and a half of this meeting. So I appreciate you staying with us. Any other discussion on both of these? And just quickly for any kind of public notice, when we talk about Mark Maloney, we had two distinct Mark Malonies in local government and they were both served on this council. And we lost Counselor Maloney earlier this year and he was on the zoning board of appeals. And now the other Mark Maloney is coming on the zoning board of appeals. So that is no error or mistake. It is two separate Mark Malonies. Both have contributed so much to this community and I'm happy to see this Mark Maloney step into the zoning board of appeals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Is there any presentations of petitions or similar papers? Is there any report of committee that I'm unaware of? Is there any unfinished business? Is there any old business? Counselor Elmer?
Yes, I wanted to remind people that the planning board meeting tomorrow, all the councils have been invited. It's the mayor, it's the new proposal coming from the planning board for the French King Highway. Not many counselors have shown up to these meetings, so I encourage everybody to come to that. Six o'clock tomorrow.
And how's that meeting being held? Is it? It's here? Is it also on Zoom?
I believe it is.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to, if people have, we, it's always good to attend those meetings or watch them because a lot of things that we ask on the floor can be already in your head before you get here. Counselor Bottomley?
That reminds me, I was asked by Counselor Disorga to remind everyone to, if they're able to at some point, watch the upcoming Capitol Ways and Means meetings and also the operating budget because it really does help us when we get to the full council meeting and proving those.
Ways and Means spends a lot of time on those meetings and answers a lot of stuff on the floor. And those meetings, I believe, are even going to be a little more lengthy this year because the mayor's going to do most of her recommendation cut on the floor instead of presenting them already cut. So there'll, there'll be a lot to those meetings. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think the meeting tomorrow does not have a link on the city's website and it's not posted as a hybrid meeting, so. You know, I'm just going to like plug again, like we really have to make sure that we have hybrid participation. I, this came up with school committee. I got a lot of response about like asking me as a city counselor why school committee is in a hybrid meeting as well, but you know, like I can't attend. I have COVID in my house. I'm not going to go out in public and risk spreading it. But I want to attend and I would be there to listen, but there's no, there's no link posted, so I'm assuming it was not posted as a hybrid meeting. I don't know if it's too late.
Our clerk has affirmed your thought. It is not a hybrid meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on anything under unfinished business? Counsel Lapiensky?
I just want to respond to that last comment by saying kudos to the planning board and the school committee for doing the right thing and meeting in person.
Any old business? New business, we have, no, go ahead, Counsel Ricketts, because it's going to be a long time of first reading. So yes, new business.
So I just want to say that Friday night, I did a ride along with an officer from the police department. I did a night shift. And so they said if any counselor would like to also do that, you know, you can pick whatever you wanted. I wanted the night shift because I just did. And so I was there for interviewing for the new officers. I interviewed six the first week and last week I interviewed the seven new ones along with other people. I just got a random call and just as a community member, not a council member, so I was part of that hiring process. But I said that I would pass along that you do learn a lot, you know. So if you want to get in touch with the police department on your own and do the ride along, I, I found it very informative. I did learn a lot and you really see the city because you have to go every place numerous times because they have to watch all businesses and go out to all the complexes everywhere. So get in touch with Gordon or Todd Dodge. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make, building off something Counsel Ricketts just said, but in a total different direction, I, I want to remind people like Counselor Ricketts just said, if you are writing or you are appearing somewhere and you're representing the opinion of yourself, I will once again ask you all not to use your council title because you create liability for the city of Greenfield. If you have decided that you want to be, you know, slanderous or you have an opinion, that's what the First Amendment in, within reason is about, letting you say what you want, but do not use your council title because it changed the dynamic of your statement. And I just, I mentioned that a month ago and I'll reiterate it once more. If you have an opinion and you want to go to every public meeting and you want to write to the newspaper and do all those things, some things are on behalf of the council, other things are on behalf of yourself, but just, I, I tell you to be cautious on those thoughts. Counselor Bottomley?
Okay, just to back up there, yes, the hiring process was as a resident. But I did the ride along as a counselor and I even wore the bulletproof vest. So you can go as a counselor, not as a resident.
Thank you. Also, a reminder from the clerk's office, please take your conflict of interest training. We have counselors that have not done that yet. New business? Sure.
Oh, I just want to follow up to what you just said about the, the personal versus the, the council title, which is that I completely agree and was sort of famously pilloried for using my council title in a an op ed in which I didn't use my council title, told the newspaper not to use it, they used it anyway.
Yeah, just be very, very cautious. And I can see, I'm just saying, if someone chooses to say I'm the counselor and then you commit any form that could be a liability to this municipality, you're changing the dynamic of your opinion. And that's all that I'll, I'll say. But I understand that if you attempt to and it's changed, but just be, just be cautious. Counselor Bottomley, start reading.
Counselor Toronto has graciously agreed to read some of these.
All right. So who's starting? It's all up to the two of you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, right. First reading, appropriate 116,684 from water retained earnings to fiscal year 23 Water Debt Service Accounts. Transfer 375,000 from Contract Stabilization Fund 8403 to Greenfield Public School Salary and Wages Accounts to fund settled contracts. Transfer 206,850 from free cash to Greenfield Public School Salaries and Wages Accounts to fund settled contracts. Community Preservation Fund Reserves, one order. Reserve 114,537.19 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund Revenues for fiscal year 22. Community Preservation Fund Purposes, FY22 Annual Budgeted Reserve. Reserve 20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund Revenues.
Reserve 20,648 dollars, 69 cents from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund Revenues for Open Space. Preserve 20,648 dollars, 69 cents from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund Revenues for Historic Resources. Reserve 20,648 dollars, 69 cents from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund Revenues for Community Housing. FY 2024 Capital.
Hold on one second. Uh, point of clarification. That reserve amount is 144,537,19.
Okay. By then. FY 2024 Capital Budget, 18 orders. Appropriate 470,000 from borrowing to purchase ambulance. Appropriate 575,000 from borrowing for upgrades to police station. Appropriate 186,238 from borrowing for three replacement police department vehicles. Appropriate 62,180 by transfer from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization for replacement of police department vehicles. Appropriate 200,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization for sidewalk replacement program. Appropriate 200,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization for Highway Fund. Appropriate 150,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization to purchase large area mower. Appropriate 55,000 by transfer from fee cash for mill and overlay paving of Legion Avenue Parking Lot. Appropriate 290,000 from borrowing to purchase a road treatment truck. Appropriate 160,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization to replace membrane roof at Old Library. Appropriate 30,000 by transfer from free cash to install roof over back stairwell at police station. Appropriate 185,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization for Rocky Mountain Highland Trail Wayfinding Map Development. Appropriate 8,000 by transfer from free cash for installation of Beacon Park Bachi Courts. Appropriate 195,068 dollars by transfer from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization for Greenfield Public Schools Energy Recovery Units. Appropriate 300,000 from borrowing for sewer inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement. Appropriate 230,000 by transfer from FY 23 Sewer Retain Earnings to replace dump truck number 37. Appropriate 400,000 by transfer from FY 23 Water Retain Earnings for water main replacement. Appropriate 45,000 by transfer from FY 23 Water Retain Earnings for Millbrook Well Number Two Rehabilitation.
Thank you. That will end the first readings. Remember, we don't take action. There's just a first reading. Are there any motions for reconsideration this evening? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made in the seconded. We adjourn the meeting at 8:48. All, you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? The meeting is adjourned at 8:48 PM?